All right, now we're moving on to our August 13th regular meeting, 7:00 PM regular meeting. We also have some special guests for the Gavel Gang, so if I could have Brooke Nguyen, and Audrey Nguyen, and Morgan Smith, come on down.
That was Morgan Smith. And this is Brooke and Audrey Nguyen.
Okay. Invocation, is there a volunteer for the invocation? Jeff Keller, I'm gonna volunteer you for the invocation.
I second.
Father God, we just thank you, pray to Father, thank you that we live in a country where we can come and exercise our right to vote and participate in the public process. We just pray your blessings on this meeting tonight, Father. Give us wisdom, give the city council wisdom. Amen.
All right. Let me call the roll, please, Daniel.
Councilmember Rebecca Chase-Williams, District 1.
Present.
Councilmember Jim Iyer, District 2. Councilmember Bates-Madison, District 3.
Here.
Councilmember Joe Gevio, District 4.
Thought we were gonna reverse the order.
Just thought about it.
Present.
Mayor Davis, we have a quorum.
All right, thank you. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I know it's a little hot in here. Brad, you sure the air's been turned on? All right, all right. Bear with us, we're gonna, this is a relatively short agenda, we're gonna try and move right through it, a lot of consent agenda items. So, do we have any agenda announcements? Okay. Public comment. If you'd like to make public comment about anything on the agenda, please go on and fill out a form and get to Daniel here, your name and address, and three minutes is your time to speak. And when you get to the microphone, please announce your name and your address.
Aubrey Valines, first, please.
Aubrey.
Aubrey Valines, 2900 Shandley Tucker Road, representing the Pink Pony. One of our last meetings, and I know things are going to rate approved in minutes. You asked a question of Scott Burkhold about legal fees, and I didn't think you really got a straight answer, so I came here to give you a straight answer. I went and Sandy Springs and got the open record, so you would know, there's no better way of predicting the future than by the past. And in the years that he has billed, to 2009, 10, 11, and 12, you had $127,627. You had a total of $164,808 by the attorney, and I'm gonna give you a copy and submit that into the record. But understand, the lawsuit was filed in 2006, so that's probably not near the total amount, maybe half of the bills. And understand also, the Sandy Springs Club is still in existence, is still in existence. So, he has billed $127,000 to them, $40,000, I think, to you to date, and I submit the total amount that has. I think you've also got figures from other municipalities around Georgia, but I think it's real, really important that you have the truth on what you're gonna be paying in legal fees. I can't tell you exactly what it is, what it's gonna be, $200,000 or $164,000, just in those years in Sandy Springs. But I think it's reasonable to assume that it's gonna be just as much as Sandy Springs, and I think that $127,000, Mayor, is St. Regis, is not Microtel. And we had our hearing on August the 1st, and the judge has deferred ruling until we can submit findings of fact and conclusions of law, which is at least 30 more days, 30 more days of legal fees. After that, it'll probably be 30 more days before she rules, then after that, summary judgment. When you were running for election, you ran on government, cutting taxes, increasing services, you didn't run on the Pink Pony. I don't know who instituted the Pink Pony into this fight, the constituents are not asking for it. You didn't ask for it in your platform, but for some reason, it's popped up, and they've told you, misleading, that unless you pass this law, you're going to have just this influx of adult clubs. There hasn't been a new adult club since 1992 in DeKalb County. Let me repeat that again, 1992. Why? Because the law on the books works. And all you're doing is spending money of your constituents, and when you go back in that room, talk and say, "Why are we doing this? Constituents didn't ask for it, they're still not asking for it." But I'm giving you a straight answer, I'm not gonna hem and haw and talk about cutting funds, I'm giving you how much Sandy Springs has paid them, just in those years, not total. And that was $164,808. Thank you.
Thank you, Aubrey. Next, Daniel. You gotta hold on, Ronnie.
Justin Pate.
Justin Pate.
The problem that you guys are facing is one of enforcement, I've said it before, I've been saying it for five years.
Justin, excuse me, is that microphone on?
Yes.
Can you speak right into it so everybody can hear you? Sorry.
Justin Pate, Rush Lounge, okay, yeah, that sounds better. Like I said, I've been saying for five years, back from the time when DeKalb County wanted to close us, this was an enforcement issue. That issue was never gonna get solved in DeKalb County, it can be solved in Brookhaven. Our licenses are privileges, privileges that can be easily revoked if we're not doing our jobs properly. We have a lot to lose, we've invested time, our lives, money into our businesses, but for some reason, you guys wanna pass this very sweeping vast ordinance that's going to hurt a whole lot of people. If you have crime that takes place at a quick trip, do you suddenly decide that you simply can't be allowed to have gas stations in Brookhaven anymore at all? Or do you send the police out, and they deal with the incident at the location at the time? You don't suddenly regulate a business completely, almost out of existence. Our business and our industry should be treated the exact same way. You punish people who break laws, you don't overreach and overdo, I mean, in this country, we do tend to overreact first and think second. And I wanted also, bringing the same thing that Aubrey brought up, is I've not been able to find one page or one argument anywhere from any of the citizens that post on The Patch, or any of the other numerous other blogs that relate to this city, that anybody's looking for what you guys are trying to do. They sent you here to improve their police protection and to lower their taxes, and none of this is accomplished by what you're trying to do with this ordinance. As a matter of fact, if you force us into a corner, and we are forced to de-anex, to my understanding, the way de-anexation works is we have to take all the businesses that are around us as well. That'll mean not only our excise drink tax, our license fees and all that stuff, it's gonna mean the giant high-rise buildings that are right next to me, that'll leave, and you'll lose their property taxes, and when it's all said and told, and a couple million dollars is missing out of your budget because you gave us no choice but to do everything we could to defend our livelihood, how are you gonna go back to your constituents and say that, "Oh, actually, yeah, we really are gonna have to raise taxes," or, "I'm sorry, we're not gonna get any new police officers, we're not gonna get any new police cars," whatever. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you, Justin. Marie, did, uh, we discussed the alcohol, the closing time ordinance in the work session?
We did.
And what was the result of that discussion? What is, when it comes to the alcohol ordinance?
The result was...
The time closing time ordinance?
Well, the result was, after consideration, that you wanted to discuss this further after January 1st, and to allow the chief to continue gathering data, as now the Brookhaven Police Force.
Okay, thank you. Next.
Ronnie Mayor.
Here I am again, Ronnie Mayor, a civic leader, community leader, well-known, all y'all guys ran, and it's really scary, but the attorney said was fixing to come out of my mouth. You all ran on, we're gonna change it to Police Department and Parks, and I don't want us to turn into the same hypocrites we got down at Memorial Drive in Decatur. Spending this money, I need a sidewalk from post-Brookhaven all the way around to where all the restaurants are on Caldwell Road. If we're spending all this stupid money on the attorney fees for something that really, nobody cares, nobody called you and said Bates, or Joe, or Jim, or Rebecca, "We gotta get rid of this Pink Pony." You know, we need, we hadn't even adopted our parks yet. We need to leave this alone, nobody asked for it, and just leave it alone, let's leave, let's use this tax money, we need more squad cars, we need more equipment, we need a canine dog, we need more officers. And then I'm gonna change my hat here, and I was invited the other day to come to a meeting on sanitation. I'm very unhappy that all the other commissioners were not there, I felt like it was like somebody just came and knocked on somebody's door and said, "Let me sell you some garbage service, Joe, I love you, I love all y'all equally." And I'm not really picking on you, but I don't like how that whole deal was done, they keep offering this franchise fee of 3% or whatever, that money's gotta come from somewhere, it just doesn't float out of the sky. And if you'll do a poll or referendum, we need to work on our parks, that's what you ran on. Come on, guys, you're wasting time, our garbage service is perfect. If you're gonna save each family $26 a year, and you invited all the garbage services, but you didn't invite DeKalb County to come. And that bothers me too, because there's some great guys, my garbage gets picked up perfectly, I have no problems with them, when we have a big storm, I call down there, they come. When we have our neighborhood cleanups in the park, you call them, they come. I don't, you know, if you take a pole, a large pole or something, you're wasting our time changing garbage, let's work on the things that you ran on, parks. We already got the best chief, assistant chief, police department, everybody loves the new cars, they're down my street three times a day now, we never had that before. And everybody gives me and these guys, it's great, a thumbs up, okay? So, I appreciate what y'all doing, you're doing a great job, I know it's a hard job, but guys, just saying with this Pink Pony, leave it alone, leave the garbage alone, it's not broke.
Thank you, Ronnie.
Let's work on our parks, okay? Because we got a great police department, with that extra tax money we don't spend, some more squad cars with the chief, thank you.
Marie, have we been working on parks?
Yes, sir, we have.
Have we been working on police?
Absolutely.
Potholes and...
Yes.
We have.
We have been very responsive in all those categories, thank you.
Marie, are we capable of multitasking?
Yes, sir, we are, and I hope that we've shown evidence of that every single day since December the 17th.
Well, let me ask one other question, in work session, did we talk about the sanitation?
We did.
Did we talk about an opportunity to have a conversation with DeKalb?
Absolutely.
Okay, great, thank you for clarifying that.
Thank you. Next.
Mandy Hunt.
Mandy Hunt.
My name is Mandy Hunt, I'm a District 4 homeowner and resident. Yesterday, I participated in a panel review of sanitation service proposals at the request of my councilman, Joe Gevio. Several homeowners were invited to participate, and all four districts were represented. Currently, our garbage collection and recycling services are provided by DeKalb County at a cost of $265 per household per year. In March, DeKalb County notified our council that they would be increasing this charge by $40 per household. In response, the city of Brookhaven announced that it would seek competitive bids for service, which in turn prompted DeKalb County to retract its increase rate for this year, though it's unclear as to what will happen come January 1st. It's my understanding there's a great deal of angst over the possible change of service, as we just heard, service providers, and I'd like to address some of the objections that I heard in this meeting. If it ain't broke, don't fix it. DeKalb County Service has received high accolades from most homeowners that I've spoken to. Their rate increase, ultimatum, is what broke it. A 15% increase for doing absolutely nothing different seems outlandish to me. I, for one, have never seen a 15% increase personally for not doing anything different. I know and like my team, my service providers, none of the prospective service providers that we met with have adequate staff resources to take on a whole new city. They've all indicated that their primary source for personnel would be existing DeKalb County employees who currently service our neighborhoods. These individuals may have to pass more rigorous screening processes than DeKalb County requires, but I, for one, would feel better knowing that the person driving that massive truck through my neighborhood is neither a drug addict, a pedophile, nor habitual drunk driver. And for homeowners with special needs or unique circumstances, accommodations can and will be made as a standard operating procedure. Third, this wasn't a campaign issue. If you hired someone to work in sales, and he or she discovered an opportunity to reduce costs and improve service levels, would you simply say, "Thanks, but that's not what I hired you to do"? I never thought that campaign issues were all that our elected officials are expected to take on during their terms. DeKalb County has presented our city with an opportunity, and we would be remiss to not seize it. Of the three proposals that were presented, there was one that stood out from the rest. It reduced annual household, per household cost by $105 per year. If you factor in the additional $40, it's $145 that DeKalb County was gonna increase. It included a $250,000 franchise fee payable to the city of Brookhaven for the right to provide services on an exclusive basis. It provided for all residents to receive brand-new City of Brookhaven branded and uniform appearance bins. It allowed for single-stream recycling, everything goes into a single bin, and it puts an emphasis on increasing recycling and investing in community development with a reward program that gives neighborhoods an opportunity to earn $5,000 per quarter, simply for recycling as much as they can. Regardless of where you stand on the issue today, I encourage you to remain open-minded. Whichever service provider is selected, they will be required to participate in a 180-day pilot program that will include at least 500 homes. If it doesn't work, it doesn't work, and we continue with DeKalb County. But what if our services could be better and cheaper? There's only one way to find out, we have to try.
Thank you. Joe, is, what you're proposing, or what you're studying, or what we're studying, is it a policy program, it's not changing over our entire sanitation system?
No, I think it would be, uh, it would be disrespectful, and it would be inappropriate to think that we should do something like this citywide. So, what it is, is a proposal, that they come in for a six-month period of time, take 500 homes, and go through a rigorous test, and the proof will be in the pudding. And as was just stated by Amanda, Amanda, that if it doesn't work, it doesn't work. And if it works, and then we have a credible program, what was unique about all of the submissions is that each of the vendors were, gave us the same price for six months versus an extended contract for citywide, so that pilot program will be what will happen in the city, so it'll be a very good barometer read.
Thank you. Next.
Chad Bowles.
Chad Bowles, all right.
Good evening, everybody, and thanks for allowing me to speak. As you can imagine, I'm here to talk about parks. We've been, kind of been, a little bit salty.
Put your face to the microphone.
As you can imagine, we've been operating in a little bit of a vacuum, and I, the friends of Briarwood Park works pretty well in a vacuum, as well as other people in the Parks Committee. We're kind of pulling forward ahead with a lot of things we'd like to see done. I wanted to give a friendly reminder that we're having a fundraiser Thursday evening at Pizza Shack for a new bathroom facility that's gonna be at the new playground, as well as a bouncy house for all the kids. In the room that wanna come and check it out on Saturday morning from 10 to 12, everybody's invited, thanks for your time.
Thank you. And that's Saturday, 10 to 12 at Pizza Shack?
No.
No.
Thursday evening from 5:30 to 7:30 at Pizza Shack.
As a fundraiser.
As a fundraiser, and then Saturday morning fundraiser at the park from 10 to 12. No politics discussed unless you want to beside the bar, or whatever, but pizza and everything else will be provided, it'll be a real good time.
Okay.
We hope to see you there, Ronnie Mayor.
Next.
I have no cards, Mayor.
All right.
I have a comment.
Okay, well, hold on, let's wait till the...
We have one more.
We do have one more.
Fill it out.
You can fill it out after you're done.
I agree. My name is Pazza, and I live on Lotus Woods Road, Brookswood Place, an apartment. I'm a 2011 graduate of Cross Keys, and, you know, school's starting, so I just wanted to say several things about the start of school. First of all, as all of you have heard, I mean, the police department is getting a lot of thumbs up. Actually, I went by Cross Keys the first day of school, and those three policemen patrolling, you know, giving kids high fives, so that's very positive. And, you know, with the start of school, just wanted to remind the drivers to be very careful, 'cause, you know, when you drive down people's highway, it looks like, I mean, at 7:00 AM and at 3:00 PM, there's all sorts of kids, and people forget to stop, 'cause, you know, the highway's so wide, so, you know, hopefully people can pay attention to that. And lastly, you know, with the start of the new city, there's a lot of hope about what's gonna happen to those schools, and I know this might not be on your agenda, but please, please, when you guys are meeting, when you're discussing, keep in mind that we have Woodward Elementary and Cross Keys High School as two public schools in Brookhaven, and would love it if you guys were advocating for us in any way that you can, so that the county cannot keep forgetting about us. Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, well, I have the opportunity to do something tonight that's a lot of fun. Yes, I'm sorry, Daniel?
We have one more councilmember.
Okay, I'm gonna...
Jeff Keller.
All right, Jeff.
Thank you. I hadn't planned on speaking on this particular issue, but as someone who actually stayed for the duration of all the meetings, and the entire four and a half to five hours yesterday and listened to all the proposals...
We'll talk about sanitation, just to clarify.
Yes, unlike a previous male speaker, I would suggest getting all the information before forming an opinion. But the reason I wanted to speak is, first of all, to say thank you to all five of you, and to the staff, and to the new police force. Nobody knows the hard work and the hours, phone calls, emails that you have put into this since December 17th, and I just wanna say thank you personally. The police force has exceeded my expectations, and from everyone that I've spoken with, I have heard no complaints whatsoever. So, thank you very much, Police Chief, and please convey that to your force. Something I wanted to bring to your attention, have any of you ever been to the Roxy Theater in Buckhead?
We can't answer questions, but I can say I've been to the Roxy Theater, Marry.
And if any of you have been to Sandy Springs, to any of their festivals, concerts, and amphitheater, those events and those facilities are run by two organizations, one is called the Buckhead Heritage Society, the other's called the Sandy Springs Heritage Society. Several of us in the beginning of this, when we started talking about all the things we can do in Brookhaven, this is one of those things. And we've gotten together, and we're gonna start an effort called the Brookhaven Heritage Society for two purposes, to preserve our history and historic properties, and to use those resources and our history to bring the community together. And once again, thank you very much for all that you do for the city.
Thank you, Jeff. Anybody else?
I have no more common cards, Mayor.
Can Joe talk now?
Are we sure?
It would be appropriate.
I get to do something really fun tonight. We're gonna honor somebody from our community for what this person has done, and I'll do it as a surprise. So, I'm gonna ask somebody to come up front and stand in front of council here, in front of the cameras, so everybody that's at home or views us later can enjoy it. Pazza Campambue, would you please come up?
No, no, come up here.
I want you to turn around in the middle, in front of the mayor, face everybody. I want to introduce Pazza to you, and I've got a couple notes here. He's a proud resident of District 4 and is a naturalized citizen. He came to the US from Zambia at age 12, graduated at the top of his class at Cross Keys in 2011, which you just heard him say, and he graduated at the top of his class. Not only is he a model athlete, he was co-captain of the first-ranked Cross Keys soccer team, but was also mastered advanced placement courses in government, foreign language, and calculus. He's an honorary page for Representative Mike Jacobs at our state capitol. Pazza is also a talented writer, who works have been published in the USA Today, College Edition, The Atlanta Journal-Constitution, The Cad Champion Newspaper, and The Brookhaven Reporter. He's currently attending Williams College in Massachusetts with a full scholarship, and he was named, I have to go back to my notes to really get all of these, he was named a Gates Millennium Scholar, Coca-Cola Scholar, Joseph W. Rosser Hatch Scholar, Adel Scholar, Buick Achievement Scholar, Robert C. Byrd Scholar, I'm not gonna go on, the kid's talented. There's a whole bunch more here. The reason why I've asked Pazza to come up is he's been a very, very positive contribution not only to his school, Cross Keys, to the community, pre and post-Brookhaven City. He's what we expect, we like in our kids, this is what we need to be producing more of out of our high school. Well, Pazza's about to take off, and we're giving him a farewell tonight, he's going to China for a year to learn Chinese. Is that correct, Pazza? Okay, so let's send him off with a good round of applause. Pazza, thank you very much.
Sure.
Sorry. Sorry. I gotta move that wheel out here. Oh, you did? Sorry. I gotta move that wheel out here. Oh, you did? Sorry.
This is what proved we're called out of Woodward Elementary and Cross Keys, we're smart kids, right? At me, Woodward and Cross Keys. You were there two brothers, though, no?
You see flashes? Somebody go. Come on, quarter. Pass. Oh.
Don't mind if we take up our jackets up here.
I have, I have one more fun thing to do. We have a new business in town, and we're gonna ask him to come up and introduce himself, and it's right around the corner. The best way to describe it, and this is my term now, avant-garde burlesque. So, Lips is opening up around the corner, and this is Edward LaFayette, the owner. And Lips first opens as a flagship location in New York City in 1966, they currently have locations in New York, Fort Lauderdale, and San Diego, and it's not a nightclub, and it's not a late work. It's a restaurant, dinner, theater with shows. Lips presents Las Vegas-style drag shows, and its target market is a wide range from sweet 16 parties to bachelorette parties, office party birthdays for 90-year-olds. for ninety-year-olds, et cetera, et cetera. So, Edward, introduce yourself, please.
Hi, my name is Edward Lefayette. This is Steven Billings. He's gonna be the general manager. Steven was the general manager. Lives in New York for five years before he went out and he became showroom manager at the Tropicana Hotel in Las Vegas. And now he's coming back to run this unit for us here. Uh, we're very happy to be in Brookhaven and hot off the presses today are the Lips Brookhaven t-shirts. Since we have the kids not party until you get some gifts, we give them all a selection of Brookhaven Lips memorabilia that's being presented.
Oh, my God.
And we have t-shirts for everyone in the audience. Uh, the one thing...
Thank you.
The one thing we do wanna let everybody know, cause generally when we open, people see the name Lips and they think, oh, my God, it's a nightclub.
Good luck to you, buddy.
Opening. We are not a nightclub.
Thanks very much.
We serve everything from filet mignon to pasta to salmon. Uh, we are a dinner theater and we do Las Vegas-style drag shows, but they are over the top like you would see on the Las Vegas Strip. Basically, we are about complete. We have the, uh, fire department coming tomorrow to do an inspection. And opening is set for September the fourteenth on a Saturday. We hope to see everybody at some point to come and visit us. Uh, and we wanna thank everyone, especially in Brookhaven, for all the help we've received. Um, we've opened units and I've opened restaurants across the country, and I do have to say, it's been one of the easiest and quickest openings, uh, with the help of the city and making sure that everything moves along. So, uh, we wanna be good neighbors. Uh, I would like, I don't know how you can do this, but I generally, wherever we open, hand out my business cards and you can put it in the record and put it online. If anybody ever has a problem, which I doubt you will, uh, with Lips or the operation, feel free to call me. As I tell them, don't call the GM, cause they're looking to make money to make their bonuses. So, the buck stops with me if it's ever a problem or anything. And my cell phone, you have the number to publish out. And, uh, we look forward to seeing everyone. September the fourteenth will be opening night. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
If you, if you ever, when you go over, they have over a million dollars of interior improvement works on that building. And it, um, it's amazing.
Yeah, it is. They've made quite an investment. They've actually, they're, they're actually property owners in Brookhaven, cause they bought the property that their, uh, restaurant is, uh, located in.
And I, I, I think, Mr. Mayor, I, I think, uh, the comment that, uh, the comments that Edward's passed on tonight, um, is really emblematic of what we're trying to do as a city as far as being minimizing the red tape, expediting, and being a very pro-business.
Thank you very much.
I'll share a little story with you real fast. I went and toured the place the other day and there were a lot of construction going on. There was a lot of attention to detail and Mr. Lefayette pulled out a, uh, big glass sparkly shoe. It was a big, about this big. It was crystals hanging from it and he said, "This is a chandelier." And I started thinking, "I've seen this kind of theme before." And he said, "Well, the fellow who designed our interior does all the design work for Barbie." So, so it looked like, it looks a little bit like a Barbie townhouse in that place. So, it's, it's actually very nice.
It's very good and it's, it's a beautiful design. And like I said, on the twelfth, we will be, we'll be publicizing it. Uh, we will have an afternoon, uh, party. Hopefully, a lot of people from the city will be able to attend. Uh, cocktail and a drink party for everyone to come take a look and see what we have to offer. And we look forward to seeing you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Welcome to Brookhaven. All right. Well, that's the, uh, public comment, unorthodox public comment section is now over. Um, unless, did you, did anybody bring a card up? Okay. All right, now we'll go on to the consent agenda.
Yes, Mr. Mayor and Council, um, we have a number of items on the consent agenda, ten items. We did discuss those in our work session. Uh, from our intergovernmental agreements with DeKalb County, um, also with the city of Doravol, the Department of Transportation. We have included, um, uh, an agreement for software for our finance department and a number of, um, minutes from meetings from July the twenty-second, the special call, uh, work session, special call, public hearing, and, uh, the city council meeting. The twenty-third of July, we have, um, city council work session minutes, as well as the city council regularly scheduled meeting minutes.
Um, just wanna point out, the first two items on the consent agenda, um, the police IGA and the parks IGA. What was the total amount that we are agreeing to pay to DeKalb County?
Three point two million dollars.
Is that in a one lump sum payment?
It is a one lump sum payment. And the IGA is actually a combined, um, IGA for both parks and police together.
Okay, so we have, that issue's been going on for a few months now and it's finally been settled. I wanna, I was involved a little bit, but I know you were, you and Bill really took the reins on this, so we, I, I wanna say we appreciate that. Um, and, uh, we feel that three point two million is a fair figure. We thank Commissioner Chairman Lee May for, uh, getting this done. And he texted me this afternoon, uh, right when it passed DeKalb County. So, once we pass this consent agenda, we'll have an agreement on our parks and police IGA with DeKalb County and move forward from there. So, thank you. It's a, it's a pretty big accomplishment and I'm glad it's done.
Really.
I, I just wanna add to my...
We have been working on other things, I think.
I think so. I just wanna thank, uh, Maria and our team for, uh, saving us, gosh, two million dollars from where we started on these negotiations. Good job, team. And I'm thrilled that we are taking over the parks, uh, the day after Labor Day. Uh, several months earlier, I think that was our, um, one of our negotiating points. And I think, uh, DeKalb was, was thrilled to take it off, uh, their burden as well. But, uh, it's gonna be very exciting when we take over our parks. And I, I know that we're gearing up for it right now, but, uh, the police, of course, are, are launched and we're thrilled about that. But I, I look forward to really a, a, a new era of, um, cooperation with DeKalb County. I think this was a big hurdle and I'm thrilled we got over it and, uh, it really was a win-win for everybody. Thank you, team.
Thank you.
I, I would like to just make one quick comment. Um, and I've stated from this seat, my criticisms of DeKalb County and my frustration that I had with them. And I can't be happier with the results that we got out of this. And, um, they were stalled in their ability to manage to the level that I thought was incumbent upon them to do it. But since the current reign, um, I couldn't be happier the way they've addressed us, respected us. And it's really in the best interest of both parties, uh, to be moving along in, in the way we are. We're ahead of schedule with the parks. And we've got our police situation totally resolved. It's a nice job. Well done.
Thank you.
Bill, accolades.
All right, um, is there a motion on the floor for the consent agenda?
I move we approve the consent agenda, subject to the, uh, minor clarifications I provided the clerk for the, uh, July twenty-second, uh, special called work session minutes. Out of the net, everything, uh, is as it was presented.
All right. Answer second?
Seconding.
All right.
That's a group second?
Yeah. I love the second because it's got the IGA in it. Um, all, any discussion? All in favor of adopting a consent agenda as, uh, as stated by Commissioner, uh, Councilman, uh, Ires? Signify so by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right. Consent agenda is adopted. Moving right along. Down to H, announcements. Um, I have, I don't mean to bring it down here, but I wanted just two things I said I was gonna mention. Um, our clerk, City Clerk Susan Hyatt, has been very ill. She's at St. Joseph's Hospital and she's been there for a few days and um, so I would like for you to keep her in, in your prayers, if you would. She's, um, uh, in, in a condition that's, uh, serious and we wanna make sure that she, we think prognosis is good, but we wanna make sure that she's, um, okay. So, we should, we need her to give you her prayers. Also, I'd like to express the city's condolences and our, and as mayor and for the council to the family of Sarah Jellin from, um, Baton Ball, who she was a bartender and assistant general manager at Baton Ball, who was unfortunately killed this weekend on Peachtree Industrial or Peachtree, um, Peachtree Road, um, Sunday morning. It's tragic and, and would like to ask you to keep her family in your prayers and the, the staff at Baton Ball as well. And also to the family of the cab officer that was killed this weekend in a traffic, I believe it was a traffic, uh, accident. I'd like to express our condolences to the DeKalb police and to the family of the DeKalb officer that was, uh, killed. Any other announcements? Okay?
It, it's tough to follow that, but I just, I wanna reiterate what, what the announcement Chad made. The Friends of Briarwood Park are this weekend, Saturday morning, from ten to twelve, having a, uh, brunch and bounce at, uh, the playground of the park. It's to raise money for a, uh, toilet facility that the Friends is trying to install there. So, if y'all are looking for something to do Saturday morning, come out to Briarwood Park Playground and, uh, join us for a little fun in the bounce house.
And Thursday evening from five to eight.
Five to seven thirty.
Five to seven thirty. Eight, I'm gonna stay, I'm gonna stay at eight. Uh, at, uh, Pizza Shack on, um, was that Caldwell? Where's that?
Yeah.
Caldwell, across from Kaleidoscope. Okay. Any more announcements? No? Reports and presentations?
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor, a quick report, um, on our apartment inspections. This is for the exterior apartment inspections, uh, according to the International Property Maintenance Code. Uh, we did launch those, uh, beginning August the fifth. And, um, in fact, our first apartment, uh, complex are, um, volunteer. They own three complexes and, um, those inspections were started last week and we hope to finish them this week. Uh, we did hold a meeting, uh, a few weeks ago with our landlords and owners of the apartment communities, as well as the tenants. Um, so we spent all day here, in fact, in this chamber, meeting with, uh, those different groups at two different times during the day. So, we, we had a good turnout. And, um, we are, um, excited about launching the program and, and working with the landlord community, as well as the tenant community. We expect to be completed with all sixty-six complexes in eighteen months.
Thank you very much, Maria. Appreciate that. Um, old business?
Yes, old business. Uh, we have four items. The first item is ordinance, uh, RZ thirteen dash zero three. It's a tax amendment to the city zoning ordinance related to building height, the maximum height for single-family residences, and threshold requirements for single-family detached structures. This is a second reading. We had discussed it um, a few times in our, um, work sessions in the past, as well as the first read that we had at our last, uh, meeting.
Thank you. Is there a motion on ordinance? Ten ninety-nine, I do.
Mr. Mayor, I moves that we approve ordinance ID ten ninety-nine, RZ thirteen dash zero three, tax amendment to the city zoning ordinance related to building height, the maximum height for single-family residences and threshold requirements for single-family detached structures.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Discussion? All in favor of adopting?
Well, well, discussion, I'm sorry. I, I'm gonna reiterate what I said at the last meeting, um, and, and I I heard concern from some of the other council members about, uh, moving forward. I think the ordinance, part of the ordinance is, is right. There, there's a section in here where we eliminate, which is part five of, of, of the proposed ordinance, where we eliminate, uh, reference to a, to a threshold. Um, there has been concern from some members in, in, or some residents in my district, and, and I heard similar concern from some of the council members, that if we eliminate that threshold, uh, requirement, then there's an opportunity for builders to, quote, push mounted dirt up and, and set a house as high as they want to. Um, I think that, uh, uh, you can mark my words, that we're gonna begin getting more and more calls from people asking about, "How did that towering house get approved?" The easy lots are gone. We're getting into the more difficult lots. And in a lot of the neighborhoods where we have single-family residential properties, um, if we don't control somehow where the first floor of, of the new house is next door, which is what part five of, of this ordinance eliminates, then I think we're gonna have issues with, uh, with, with homes towering over the adjacent. People are gonna be looking out of the window into, uh, uh, now they're looking into their neighbor's window. Uh, next week, they'll be looking into their, their neighbor's basement walls. So, I would hope that, or I would, would, would ask that we amend the, the, uh, the approval to approve the height change that's proposed by staff, but to eliminate, uh, the change to, uh, part five, which is again, the, the elimination of, of the threshold limitation that I believe is gonna have, uh, strong impact on, uh, uh, future development in, uh, in the Brookhaven area.
Thank you, Jim. Any more discussion? All in favor of the ordinance? Signify so by...
Yeah, I'm sorry. I do have a question. Jim, when you look at part four, uh, I guess your point is that it says, "No new construction of a single-family detached dwelling shall exceed forty feet." I guess your concern is that, um,
No, I'm, I'm...
If it's not new construction?
No, part five is, is the, is the section that...
It says that, uh, it is deleted in its entirety.
Yes.
Elevation of residential thresholds, but but part four in A
It was a motion.
Says that it's, it's, um...
Point of order, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
It was a form of a motion to amend the original motion. There'd be a requirement of a second before there'd be discussion on the amendment.
I didn't hear it. I heard, did you wanna make a motion to amend, Jim?
I believe he, I believe he did.
You mentioned there was...
I'd, I'd like to amend, yes.
Okay.
So, prior to making any, for any further discussion on that, it would, it would require a second for the amendment.
I see what you're saying. Okay. All right. No, is there, no, there's no second? Um, hearing none, then we'll just go back to the discussion on the first...
All right. The amendment dies for lack of a second.
Okay, all right. Okay, any more discussion? Joe, if you wanna, can you s...
Jim, did you, um, did you finish your sentence?
Uh, you were talking.
Well, no, I mean, uh, part A talks about a forty feet in height. So, clarify for me.
My, my request was to eliminate part four of the proposed ordinance, which eliminates in its entirety section twenty-seven dash seven four nine.
You mean part five?
Part five, yes. I'm sorry. Part five, yes. And that's the one that I think long-term, we're gonna have problems with that. So, we're gonna be getting more and more calls from people who are, uh, wondering about the house next door and how it's gonna be so tall.
I, um, I'll make a comment. I'll discuss this. That may, you know, there may be some issues come up within the future or, or not. I don't know. Um, I just wanna ask, when Susan Cannon presented this last week, this is the ordinance that she kinda came up with in response to our, our request about height restrictions and she said this was the tool she needed to apply the height restriction ordinance effectively in Brookhaven. She came up with a tool. She's seen it used in other jurisdictions. If problems arise, I think we can address it then, but she seemed to think that this was, uh, an effective tool where, um...
And, and, and I don't disagree with her that, that parts one through four are effective and that deals with changing the height from thirty-five to, to forty feet. It, it provides for the average height versus the threshold, threshold height. Part five is a completely different matter. That, that, that is setting the first floor elevation of, of the house relative to the existing house.
And she got rid of the threshold requirement, right?
That's correct.
And the reason she did that is because the threshold requirement was, was partially problematic, is what she said.
Well, let me chime in a little bit.
It was problematic because the surveyors were not providing sufficient information for them to determine what the
That's right.
What, what, what the threshold was.
The threshold requirement is being replaced, and, correct me if I'm wrong, by the average elevation of the, uh, slope of land.
No, the, the, no, the, the original, we have, we have, we're using threshold in two different ways. One, we're using in, in the existing ordinance, correct me if I'm wrong, Maria, but in the existing ordinance, the threshold is used as a starting point for the thirty-five-foot height limitation on houses. That's going away with, with the new language in parts one through four. Now, the, now the height of the, of the house is based on a forty-foot from the average grade around the base to a forty-foot average. So, we're getting the averages.
Right.
That's parts one through four. Parts five deals with another section of the code that specifically says the finished floor elevation, the first floor threshold of, of the new house has to be plus or minus two feet or could be no more than two feet higher than the existing threshold. So, it, it, it's two different, two different sections of the code, dealing with, with, with two different sections of, of the construction. One is, one is setting the height, the other's setting the relative height of the first floor.
And the reason I, I'm against holding that, that, that threshold in the code is that I believe that it's a property owner's right to decide where they wanna put their threshold. And they shouldn't be bound by the previous owner's decision of where they put their threshold. This is a property owner's rights issue and, uh, you know, when you're, you're, you're tying somebody to a legacy threshold that, that was not the reason why they brought the property.
Maria, do you have any?
I was just gonna say, you know, Ms. Cannon discussed this at length at our last meeting and explaining it, and, and I think in her explanation, Mr. Madison, prepared the best graphic
Yeah, where's your graphic, mate?
That was available. It was like, she called it a seesaw. Right, it, it is. But, um, what this is in response to is, is a request from the community. You know, we have, um, property owners right now that have been waiting months to be able to pull a permit to build a house that is built in Johns Creek, City of Milton, Roswell, I think even Sandy Springs, and it's an identical house. And what Susan was looking for is what is the standard in the industry that she has practiced, that I've practiced, and, and, and others in the field, not only in the metro area, but, uh, even outside, to provide some simplicity in how you measure height. And I think with, um, and believe what she has presented, uh, is the remedy.
Thank you. All right, any more discussion?
I, again, I, I disagree. I think they're two separate items, but I guess that, that, that's my opinion and we'll let the, the council, uh, uh, decide. But I, I think they're, they're two separate items and I think that we will hear from, from folks asking about how that house got put on top of the pile of dirt and so high next door.
All right. Well, we heard, yeah, we heard from folks on the present ordinance... Well, we heard, yeah, we heard from folks on the present ordinance that caused problems, that caused problems at my house. So there's a track record for the present ordinance. We'll see if the one gets developed for the second one, but you might be right, Jim. We might end up having to come back and...
Again, the, the change would allow, would have allowed your house. I mean, it, it takes it from 35 to an average of 40 with Parts 1 through 4 of the proposed ordinance.
All right.
Marie, do we, do we, we have projects pending on this?
Yes, we do.
Okay. That's number one. Number two, we want to come back and revisit this on that issue. We can.
Absolutely. At any time. And your, your best indicator is going to be Susan Cannon.
Right.
Who receives and reviews and works with her staff in the community development department to see where there are flaws or, or problem areas in any ordinance.
Okay. Regardless of the outcome of tonight's vote, can I ask that on the next work session, we talk about this particular one?
Absolutely. We'd put it back on.
Thank you.
Thank you. All in favor of adopting the ordinance, signify so by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Say, no. Say nay.
No.
Nay.
Never.
Yes.
Ordinance passes. Daniel, please enter to the record. Number two?
Number two is ID 1100, RZ 13-04, a text amendment to the city sign ordinance. This is the second reading. We have discussed this in previous work sessions as well as had a first read at our last council meeting.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move that we defer?
The sign ordinance? No, that's not...
Okay. Bill's giving me the aye. I gotta find my time.
I'm not telling you what to do, but I think that's from the 3 and 4.
Yeah. I, I move we approve ordinance ID 1100, RZ 13-04, text amendment to the city sign ordinance on second read.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Joe, you have anything?
No.
Retract. All right. Any discussion? All right. All in favor of passing the ordinance, signify so by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Daniel, please enter into the record that is passed. Three, is there a motion for 3 and 4?
Yes. Mr. Mayor, if we could combine these, the rezoning of RZ 13-05 and ordinance for annexation 13-01, both for Century Center, annexation and rezoning, ask that you all defer this.
Is there a motion?
I would like to move that we defer Points 3 and 4, rezoning ordinance ID 1113 and ordinance ID 1120 until next council meeting?
Any discussion? Or is there a second?
Seconding.
Any discussion? All in favor of deferral of 3 and 4, signify so by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed? All right. The ordinance is deferred. New business?
None.
Okay. Other business? Is new and other business not the same kind of?
Could be.
Yeah. Public comments? More public comment?
I have no cards, Mayor.
Uh-oh. No card, no talk.
Here we go. Thanks, sir. Dennis Williams?
All right.
Good afternoon or good evening, Mayor and Council. I appreciate your time. I wanted to present to you, I have some packages here I'd like to hand each council member. It's just basically a memorandum in reference to what we talked in the work session. We talked about this afternoon in reference to the hours issue. I'd like to say thank you very much for, and Chief Andura, for bringing forward, taking it one step forward, put more transparency into this issue before the decision is made. Basically, these are comprehensive studies that once were requested by Councilwoman Bia and yourself and Councilwoman Chase Williams that want, presenting my ideas in reference to the issue of after-hours of late-night zoning. These studies involve the City of Chicago, Kansas City, Daytona Beach, Charlotte, Ontario, London. They're international studies. And what I'm asking on the very first part of the study is a Chicago plan that offers late-night liquor licenses, extended hours. And why I'm interested in you possibly coming forward with ordinances, ordinance on this was that Mayor Davis said something about balance. And in the statistical data that was presented by the chief, it referenced the amount of incidents or police service actions that were taken to establishments. That balance would be there by maybe possibly drafting a ordinance offering late night and it would be specifically targeting any businesses that could be nuisance problems or code enforcement problems. And it would offer plenty of transparency and clarity in the idea that if there are habitual violators, their license for late night is subject to be revoked. And at the same time, their license as a whole, due to numerous incidents, as other municipalities or counties offer, go before license review boards on the idea of revocation or suspension. What I'm basically saying is, is take a look at this. A lot of the studies have statistically meaning, there is no really positive impact or negative impact. People are still going to drink the same amount if they decide to. The studies point out statistical data that the crime or driving under the influence has not been curbed or less. And the studies also state that enforcement is the issue involving solutions to any nuisance I would like you to definitely look at this, be sure with your city attorney and the city manager. Chief Andura, I gave him one during the work session to take a look at. And again, please consider this, weighing this out along with your meetings that you have in the future. I would love to attend along with other club owners. We like to run a tight ship there. I operate the pony and in good faith, look forward to working with the city and trying to get this matter resolved.
Thank you.
And let me hand these to you. Thank you for your time.
Blair Bell.
Ms. Bell?
Hi, guys. Blair Bell, Osborne Road. And because of the amendment that was passed tonight, I will be able to build my dream home on Reading Road. So I just wanted to thank you guys sincerely from the bottom of my heart for listening to this issue and for taking action. I can't imagine us ever being able to do this with the City of Atlanta or DeKalb County. I can't imagine that that would ever, you know, would ever go that far. So I just really want to thank you guys so much for listening to a concern and hopefully, you know, we can get a lot more families to build and businesses to come to Brookhaven. So I look forward to it. Just wanted to thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bell. Congratulations.
Thank you. And then also I want to tell the fire department that I have my card and my number if they want to use our house for SWAT or whatever they need before we demo it.
Oh. Oh.
Ronnie may have told me about that. I just wanted to offer it up, so.
Chief? All right.
I know I talked about that.
You know, we, we laugh, but the fire department and the police department are always looking for houses because I've heard from both of them that the existing houses are a lot different than the training houses they use.
Okay.
They like to, so, you know, I talked to Marie about possibility of somehow working with our demolition permit to, for folks that want to volunteer their house because it gives the, the police and fire an opportunity to see a real-life situation in, in houses local to, to the Brookhaven area.
Chief, would you do a live fire? You wouldn't do a live fire?
No.
Dump rubber bullets or flashbangs or something?
Flashbangs.
Okay.
Would you do this in a joint effort with the fire department?
No. They would come out after we're done with.
After you destroy it, right? They'll, they'll burn the town.
Do you have any interest in doing and using it for anything? This house?
Actually, we, we met with the, the Art Atlanta SWAT, fire down there. Usually SWAT teams.
Okay. Well, good.
Excellent.
Thank you all so much.
Thank you.
Best of luck.
Ronnie wants to come up. I think he's turned his card in already, Daniel.
Is Ronnie next or somebody else?
I have some submitted cards.
Okay. Okay. Hold on. Wait, got to wait till the people who follow procedure go first.
Mr. Darrell Thomas would like his comment read into the record for ordinance 2013-0502. He stated, "The passing of this ordinance will severely affect my income and my ability to finish graduate school. Furthermore, the club I work at, Rush Lounge, has had no recent noise complaints and operates with the neighborhood in mind." That was his comment, Mayor.
Is that ordinance on the agenda?
No, I believe it was on the work session.
Okay. All right. Next card?
Aubrey Valance.
All right.
Thank you, Mayor. Counsel, I apologize for you having to hear from me twice, but I want to thank you for what you did in the work session, taking your time, looking at this diligently. I appreciate that. I don't know what result you'll ultimately reach, but I do appreciate it. I appreciate your courtesy you always show me. I want to talk a little bit about secondary effects. I know you've heard Burko's talk about it, but I want to talk briefly. Imagine I wanted to buy a house next to the Haven or the 57th, or for that matter, Lips that is now coming in. And I said, "I want to know what the secondary effects are, what the crime is like next to the Haven, which has a bar and a restaurant, or the 57th." And my realtor or my lawyer says, "Well, let me tell you what it's like when you've got a bar and a restaurant like that in Amarillo, Texas, or in Seattle, Washington, or in Daytona Beach, or San Diego, or Indianapolis." And you say, "Are you crazy? What's wrong with you? That's the stupidest, most insane thing I've ever heard in my life. I'm buying a house next to the Haven. I want to know what the crime is like if I buy a house next to where there's a bar and a restaurant there in Brookhaven." You say, "Well, let me tell you what it's like in Seattle." You say, "Are you crazy? Well, no, I can show what the secondary effects are there. It's fine there." That's what you're doing. And you have the right to do it, possibly. But why would you do it? Because you all talked about local control when you got elected and when you ran. You want to know what's going on locally? Then look at what goes on at the Pony, not what goes on in Amarillo, Texas, or in Austin, Texas, or in Seattle, or Spokane. That is ludicrous. We're going to present just as many studies when it gets to that stage in a year or two that show there are no secondary effects to where we are. We're going to do it right here. But if I were buying a house next to Lips or Haven and my realtor looked at me or my lawyer said, "Let me tell you what the effects are like out in Salt Lake City, Utah," I'd say, "You're crazy."
Thank you.
Thank you. I believe Mr. Mayor would like to speak.
All right.
This is Bill, M-A-Y-A-R. Like I say again, I appreciate what everybody does. I don't know what y'all two...
Y'all give a butt in there.
But I don't know what everybody on the line here does for a living, but Jim Iyer has expertise in property. And I'm going to tell you in a layman's way what you just voted against. The, the good thing is, is their new house is going to be just like ours, the threshold. Well, in layman's terms, the easiest way to understand that you don't know what you're talking about is if a builder wants to force a basement, somebody wants a basement. And, and you were wrong when you said it's the builder's rights or whoever. What about the person that lives right there, that lives in the house next door, has lived there 50 years? And you say, "But the new person has rights." What about the old person? The builder, like you said, the lots are getting very scarce. On one side of Reading Road, there're basement lots. The other side is flat. So if you get on the flat side and you have a one-story house there and then a builder comes in and he forces a basement, so he puts on another floor, you know how much bigger that house is going to be? And it doesn't, if you go on the other side of Dresden Drive, on y'all's side, you see the houses, the basements are really, it's not a basement lot and they force it in there. If you do exactly like Mr. Iyer said, you're not hurting the building of any homes. You're just going to really stop the riffraff of some of these untrained builders who come in and just throw a house up for the profit and they suck the money out of the neighborhood